... a great place to be. All this germs floating around, the worst there is.
Three, two.
I'd like to call the May PCOS and City School Board Meeting to order. Curtis?
Today, our pledge leader is Logan Landers. He is a PES student in Ms. Eastman's fifth grade class. Logan is a young man with some very interesting interests. He loves camping and is very fascinated with those who live outside the grid and live off the land. He likes to watch videos about how primitive tools were made many years ago. Logan has two dogs named Chunk and Gus. He absolutely loves technology and has an app on his mom's phone where he can create music like you heard in the eighties. Logan is thinking about studying engineering when he goes to college.
The pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our inspirational reader is Sidney Durney. She is a fourth grader in Ms. Frisbee's and Ms. Haddock's classes. She is creative and loves to draw and build things. One time, she made a model of the solar system. Sidney swims, plays piano, is a Girl Scout, and enjoys making poetry. She thinks she would like to be a medical examiner, performing autopsy someday. Once, she found a dead snake on the side of the road, and so she dissected it and found a whole caterpillar inside.
Wow.
She wanted to find something else to dissect, but her mom said no. Tonight, Sidney is going to read her reflection she wrote from one of her favorite books, Three Hundred and Sixty-Five Days of Wonder by R.J. Palicio. She has titled her reflection Beautiful.
Beautiful. The definition of a precept is a quote with a higher meaning. The precept I'm writing about is "Don't choose the one who is beautiful to the world, but rather choose the one who makes your world beautiful," by Harry Styles. I think it means don't choose someone just because they're rich, famous, or very pretty or handsome. Choose someone who is kind, helpful, hardworking, warm-hearted, and someone who will make you laugh when you're feeling blue. If you choose someone who will make you happy, then you'll be happy for the rest of your life, even if you're not rich or famous. I mean who wants to be rich or famous and miserable when you can be happy and joyful just without the money and cameras. All that matters is that you are happy.
Thank you. Sidney, those were the best words of wisdom I've heard in a long time. You hit the nail on the head with that one. Nice. Thank you. Next is student presentations. And students, if you would stick around for just a few minutes after your presentation and recognitions, we'd like to take a break and come out and speak with you. PCOS Elementary School participated in the school-wide program Virginia Reads One Book, The Lemonade War by Jacqueline Davies. This project included the participation of teachers, students, parents, and community members. Tonight, students from PES will share with you all the fun and exciting activities that took place during this project. Students presenting include Taryn Flotman, Ashlyn Flotman, Sidney Durney, Emmett Durney, Jonah Easley, and Shone Manalbo.
Good evening. Our three sets of sibling students are here to describe a school-wide initiative carried out this year in February and March. The project started with our school's decision to participate in Virginia Reads One Book, sponsored by ReadToThem.org. The premise: PES purchased a copy of The Lemonade War for every student to take home so that parents could devote time to reading out loud at night. ReadToThem provided a schedule, some materials to get us started, and some ideas for tying the book to financial literacy that the students could really grasp. Our school took that and ran with it, turning it into not just a reading event for students, but also an opportunity for staff, students, parents, and the community to come together teaching valuable life lessons about money and finances. The program concluded with our first-ever Family Financial Literacy Night. These brothers and sisters are anxious to tell you about it. Hey, no fighting over who goes first. Emmett?
PES kicked off The Lemonade War on February 5th with a school-wide assembly. The teachers performed a skit about two competing lemonade stands. Then the students got to watch a video of a Washington Redskins football player reading the first chapter of the book to us. Later that day, we all received our books with instruction packets for our parents. My sister will give us a summary of The Lemonade War.
Sometimes, civil sibling rivalry can be pretty tough. In The Lemonade War, rising fourth grader Evan just wants some time away from his little sister Jessie, especially once he learns that she's skipping a grade and joining his class. Their conflict reaches new levels when they open competing lemonade stands. A bet for who can bring the most money teaches their brother and sister a lot about running a business, the math skills needed for making money, and what it takes to be a good sibling and friend.
To make this reading event a success at our school, we needed a lot of support. PES parents were an important part of our program. They read to us, which studies and proves our vocabulary, our interest in reading, and our relationship with parents when we talk about difficult situations, sometimes in books. We began reading the book on February 5th and finished on March 5th, except for me. I finished the book early because I liked it and wanted to finish it before my brother and classmates. PES students were involved way more than just reading the book. Each day, classes answered trivia questions about the book given on the morning announcements. In our makerspace and Tinker Tuesday sessions, students created skit prompts and videos using a green screen. To promote Financial Literacy Night, all students got involved in our own Lemonade War to raise money for our charity by carefully voting on the causes that mean the most to us and wearing colors to support those groups. Of course, the fifth grade raised the most money.
Some community members in the PCOS also got involved by recording videos of themselves, reading chapters that were posted to the school website. The students had the chance to have all chapters read to them, even if a parent could not sometimes. Thanks to the help of school administrators, the PES Battle of the Books Team, the PHS Winter Sports State Camp, the PCOS Police Chief, the voice of PCOS Sports Announcer, the Director of Paws, the President of Pomaca, and recent PCOS graduates, including a college sports broadcaster, a city councilman, Ms. Virginia, and an Oakland A's baseball player. We held the first-ever PES Family Financial Literacy Night on March 14th, where over 220 students, siblings, and parents attended. The K-Kids Club held a plant sale in order to replace the school's American flag. The SCA managed the grade-level lemonade stands, which raised over $1,200, where the students selected charities. Bayport Credit Union was a big supporter by serving pizza dinner and teaching financial literacy through bingo. Students learned a lot about managing money while earning cool prizes. This event started an educational partnership between PES and Bayport. Several parents opened bank accounts for their children that night. Bayport has started to hold banking days at PES monthly.
So, for us here at PES, a little healthy competition and support from multiple partners helped all our students win with The Lemonade War. Thank you.
Thank you, students. Well done. Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We do not this evening.
And next up is recognitions. Dr. Parrish?
Yes. Well, Dr. Carter moves over to the podium. I'd first like to have us recognize our Volunteers of the Month, and they come from PCOS Elementary School. So if Carrie Chow and Kristiane Turlington could come forward, please. Mrs. Chow has two children in PCOS schools, one at the elementary and one at the high school. Mrs. Turlington has three children, with one at the elementary, one at the middle, and one at the high school. These two ladies were the co-coaches of this year's PES Battle of the Books Team and have assisted the librarian by reading all of the books, creating questions to help prepare the students for the competition, and most of all, attending numerous before-school practices. Their assistance was so very valuable to the success of the team, which took second place in the regional competition. Thank you so much to these two women who are examples of the parents at PES who support the school and students and are committed to their success. Please join me in congratulating both of them on being the Volunteers of the Month. And thank you so much, ladies. We do so appreciate the volunteer support that many others of you in the room provide for us. Next, I'd like to recognize actually the March Student of the Month, and that is Emma Canela. Sorry, the May Student of the Month. I thought we were playing catch-up. She is a senior at PCOS High School. She has been on the PHS field hockey team since eighth grade and is the second-team All-State her senior year. PHS soccer, eighth grade through eleventh grade, and won the Chris Garvey Fighting Spirit Award in tenth grade. Emma is a member of the PHS Key Club, Student to Student, NHS, Spanish Honor Society, MU Alpha Theta. She went to Virginia Girl State and was awarded the Model Citizen Award. She is also a member of the Immaculate Conception Senior Youth Group. After high school, Emma plans to attend Washington and Lee University to major in political science and economics. Please join me congratulating Emma for being the May Student of the Month. Next, we'd like to recognize one of our teachers. We're excited to recognize Ms. Ellen Fassella, if she would come forward, please. Ms. Fassella is being congratulated for her selection as the Langley Chapter of the Air Force Association STEM Teacher of the Year. A member of PCOS High School Career and Technical Education Department, Ms. Fassella is recognized for her accomplishments and achievements in exciting K-12 students about science, technology, engineering, and math, and preparing students to use and contribute to tomorrow's technologies. Ms. Fassella's students embrace the true meaning of STEM. In the past two years, she's been at PCOS High School, where students have embraced STEM on a daily basis to produce technical drawings, architectural models, product prototypes, and practical solutions to everyday problems. As a result of her creativity and guidance, PHS students have met with success in the Sname Boat Design Competition and the High Schools United with NASA to create hardware, or HUNCH, design challenge, even being selected over 600 other schools to attend Johnson Space Center to receive prototype feedback. Additionally, Ms. Fassella has built a significant partnership with New Horizons Regional Technical Center, collaborating for carpentry students to construct items designed by her students to benefit community organizations, as well as other valuable projects. Ms. Fassella continually seeks opportunities for her students to apply their skills, even reaching out to post-secondary institutions to open doors for students that would otherwise be closed. From guest speakers to field experiences, Ms. Fassella continually works to enrich the educational experiences of students, and we are excited that she's being recognized for her dedication. Congratulations, Ms. Fassella, on being named the Langley AFA STEM Teacher of the Year. And I walked into the, I was in the high school day and walked into her classroom, and they were putting boats together for the boat competition. So it goes on all year, and we thank you for that. Next, we'd like to recognize Morgan Miller. She'd come forward, please. Morgan is a junior at PHS. We're recognizing her for her accomplishments at the 2A State Swim Meet. The other swim team state winners were recognized in March, but Morgan had a prior commitment and was unable to attend. At the 2A State Championship, Morgan swam the 200 individual medley and the 500 freestyle with placing first, plus setting state records in both events. Congratulations go to Morgan, and we look forward to seeing what record she will break at next year's State Meet. Please join me in congratulating her. We'd now like to recognize our Odyssey of the Mine team members who are successful in the state competition. Five of PCOS and City Schools' OM teams competed in the Virginia State Competition on April 14th. The competition was extremely competitive, with the best teams from the eight Virginia regions competing for a chance to advance on to World Finals. Our teams once again proudly represented PCOS with a first, third, fourth, and two fifth-place finishes. We'd like to begin our recognition of our Animal House Middle School Team for finishing third at the state competition. I'd ask that the following members of the PMS team come forward as their names are called. Cameron Brewer. Jason Norville. Karen Spurling. Caitlin Stone. Swain Sparkman. A.J. Smith. I would also like to recognize the coaches of the team, Norm Rumchuk and Sandy Brewer, if you'd please come forward. So let me tell you. What I'm gonna do while picture-taking is occurring is read a little bit about them. The team put on an amazing performance about The Road Runner and Wile E. Coyote. They artistically designed a real-life storybook to serve as the background for the performance. The team wowed the audience with their handmade costumes of The Road Runner, Coyote, and their narrator, a talking cactus. The team ended the day by earning the highest score in their spontaneous problem, second highest score in their performance, and holding the third-highest weight on their structure. Please join me in congratulating these students for their success at the state competition for Odyssey of the Mine. Thank you. Now, we'd like to recognize the PHS Structure Team, who placed first in Virginia State Competition and will represent PCOS in the Odyssey of the Mine World Competition starting on May 23rd. Can the following students please come forward as I read your name? Zachary Register. Sidney Baggett. Elizabeth Baggett. Sandra Phan. Colby Baker. Brody Weston. Eleanor Patterson. I'd also ask that Mr. Rumchuk come forward as the coach of this team as well. The high school team's solution to this year's problem was very technical and unique. First, they demonstrated astonishing artistic qualities in their performance with a hand-painted sunken ship wrecked into a coral reef for their background. Then they amazed the audience with their animal decorations and the method used to change a costume. The team ended the day earning the highest scores for how they solved the problem and in their performance. Second-highest score in spontaneous and holding the second-highest weight of 737 pounds on their structure. I also want to recognize Sandra Phan, who's a senior with us, for being recognized twice at the state tournament. First, she received an Omer Award and also was awarded the Virginia Odyssey of the Mine Scholarship. I would also like to point out that three of these students not only participated in the high school team, but they were co-coaches for the elementary school and middle school teams. So thank you to Elizabeth Baggett, Sandra Phan, and Colby Baker for your hours teaching the younger Omers creative problem-solving, risk-taking, divergent thinking, and the importance of working as a team. So thank you. Please join me in congratulating these students for their success. We look forward to hearing the news about our team after the 2018 World Finals that will be held from the 23rd to the 26th at Iowa State University. And now, we'd ask if Curtis Brown would come forward, please. Curtis is a junior at PCOS High School and has been serving as our student representative to the school board for this school year. He is a varsity football and track and field, both winter and spring athlete. Curtis is a member of National Honor Society, Save the Bees Club, president of Math Honor Society, and member-at-large of Key Club. He's served as co-director of the Spring Musical at PHS, The Addams Family, which I can tell you is wonderful. Outside of PHS, he serves as a student leader at Liberty Baptist Church. After graduating from PCOS High School, he plans to attend Mississippi State to major in aerospace engineering. Please join me in thanking Curtis for his service to our school board this year.
We do have one more presentation that is not on the agenda, and it is my privilege to read this one. Each year, we honor staff and students who earn state-level recognitions or awards. Tonight, we would like to recognize our superintendent, Dr. Jennifer Parrish, for being named the Virginia Association of School Superintendents 2018-2019 Region Two Superintendent of the Year. Dr. Parrish is one of eight superintendents from across the state to earn this recognition. Dr. Parrish, if you would please join Dr. Cor- Dr. Parrish has served as the superintendent of PCOS City Public Schools since 2008. Prior to becoming superintendent, she worked for the York County School Division for 18 years, where she served as a teacher, principal, director, and chief academic officer. Dr. Parrish received her bachelor's and master's degrees from the University of Virginia and her educational specialist and doctorate from the College of William &amp; Mary. In addition to her work as a division superintendent, Dr. Parrish served as the president of the Virginia Association of School Superintendents in 2016, is a member of the Virginia SOL Innovation Committee, the WHRO Board of Directors, and serves as the chair of the School University Research Network. Dr. Parrish is an executive associate professor at the College of William &amp; Mary and an active member of the PCOS Kiwanis and the PCOS Education Foundation. Dr. Gary Carter, our school board chairman, states, "I congratulate Dr. Parrish on her selection as Virginia's Region Two Superintendent of the Year for 2019. She works tirelessly to ensure that our schools provide students with the skills and knowledge they need to be successful, and is steadfast in her dedication to the students, staff, parents, and the community of PCOS. Her leadership is unsurpassed and is one of the many reasons PCOS City Public Schools are as successful as they are. It is an honor to work with her." Additionally, Virginia Association of School Superintendents will award a $500 RRM, M Architects Superintendent Scholarship to a graduating senior from PCOS High School in Dr. Parrish's honor. Please join me in congratulating Dr. Jennifer Parrish for being named the Region Two Superintendent of the Year.
I just want to say, first of all, that was completely unplanned by me, if you didn't know. And I love recognizing people and would prefer not to be in the spotlight, but thank you all so much. I am just so fortunate to be in a school system and a community like ours, and it's been 10 years now, and it feels like it's just flown by, but thank you for all your support, and more importantly, thank you and congratulations to all of our students and staff who were recognized tonight. You all are what's important about our school division. Thanks.
And with that, we'll take a break.
... their faces, and nobody can get a good picture.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm writing a note.
All right, next up, presentations and reports, and our first will be Financial Update with Ms. Woodruff.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, members of the school board, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I just have a few brief updates. City Council approved their budget last night, and it included the school board's funding request for fiscal year 2019 without any changes. However, we are still waiting on the state's budget, so once we get that outcome, we'll see what we need to do. Staff has begun working on the closeout of fiscal year 2018. We met with the auditors for planning of the upcoming audit process, and they will begin preliminary-
We met with the auditors for planning of the upcoming audit process, and they will begin preliminary work towards the end of June, and then will continue on and off throughout the summer in our office and at each of the schools. And then they will resume their full audit work the beginning of September. We are also preparing for open enrollment with staff as the open enrollment period will be from May 29th through June 22nd for employees to complete their benefit selections. We will have representatives from our providers onsite the first week of June to meet with employees and answer their questions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. Next up, operations update with Mr. Papas.
Good evening, School Board, Chairman Carter, Region Two Superintendent of the Year. This Saturday, May 19th, PCPS drivers, bus drivers that is, will be participating in a bus rodeo in York County. The skills being tested include parallel parking, offset alley, a stop line test, a very challenging right-hand turn, and backing a 39-foot-long, eight-and-a-half-foot-wide bus into a 10-foot-wide space. Three of us will be there to assist in the judging, and while this is a skills training event, there's plenty of family fun to be had with novelties and food for families and children alike. It's worth noting that in addition to our competitors, several other Pecosin drivers and their families will be in attendance to root for their Pecosin favorite driver. In your consent agenda this evening is a request for authorization to extend the custodial contract for an additional year. This is a continuation of the existing contract. A reminder to our community, we have outsourced custodial services for many years, in part as a cost savings. In 2011, our school, since 2011, our school lunch prices have increased as a function of the federally-supplied price lunch equity tool, which required such increases. In a 2018 Appropriations Act, Congress stipulated that only food service authorities which had a negative balance in their nonprofit account as of January 31st, 2018, were required to use the price lunch equity tool to set prices which could increase prices again this year. We are not bringing forward a request this year to increase the cost of meals in our schools as a result of the Appropriations Act and because we are in the black in terms of our food service balance. Lastly, PCPS completed all of the enhancements as well as all of the filing requirements associated with our 2017-2018 security grant, and has received all of the funds which we were entitled to. We still await to learn whether or not in fiscal 19, the state budget will include funding for an additional security grant. And that concludes my operations report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Mr. Papas, I have yet found it in the Constitution where the government can meddle in the affairs of public lunch prices, but I'm still looking. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Next, Dr. Fox with the instructional update.
Good evening Chairman Carter, Vice Chair Whitaker, members of the board, and Dr. Parrish. This evening, my instructional update focuses on a few of the activities taking place as we come to the close of another school year. Currently, many of our students are sitting for various tests, assessments, or exams. While my summary tonight includes our standard assessments, please note that there are many other types of assessments taking place this month for our students, such as performance assessments, presentations, and group projects. Advanced placement students completed their national testing during the first two weeks of May, and the phonological awareness literacy screening assessment, also known as PALs, is being conducted to ensure students have the reading skills they need to be successful. Students in grades three through 12 will be taking SOL tests to measure their content mastery, and our career and technical education students will be completing their workplace readiness skills assessments and credentialing exams, many of which can lead to industry certifications. Also wanted to share a brief word with you tonight about our summer school programs. Parents of students in kindergarten through eighth grade who have been identified for summer school are being contacted by each school. For these students, transportation is provided, and state funding covers the costs of the program so that there's no cost to our families. I would encourage the parents to send their children to summer school if they have been contacted by our schools. We use those summer weeks to provide important instructional support to help students hone academic skills for improved achievement. This year at the high school, we're offering ninth grade health and PE and 10th grade drivers' education onsite. Due to low enrollment over the past few years, all other courses are going to be offered either through the Virtual Virginia Program or through York County's Virtual High School Program. The high school program is not covered by state funding, so students are charged tuition to cover the costs of the program. Transportation is provided to our high school students for those courses that are offered onsite. Information about our summer school programs is currently listed on our website, and our summer school classes will begin for all students on Monday, June 26th. So if parents have any questions about summer school, we encourage them to contact their child's school. And lastly, we want to wish all of our students the best of luck in the coming weeks as they take their assessments and complete their coursework for the 2017-18 school year. Thank you to all of our teachers, our staff, students, and parents for their hard work and their efforts this school year. This concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Much, Dr. Fox. Any public comments? A consent agenda, Ms. Whitaker, could you?
Absolutely. There are six items on the consent agenda. They are: Approval of financial reports, approval of personnel action, Authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached request, Approval of minutes of April regular meeting and work session, Closed session on April 10th, 2018, and Authorization for superintendent to execute a contract for Solutions Corporation to provide custodial janitorial services to Pecosin City Public Schools.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And the second?
Second.
Mr. Omerus, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Holcomb?
Hi.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Whitaker?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And for other matters of consideration, consideration of approval of first reading of changes to policy five, tax 7.6, employee absent unified leave, second reading, Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I'm actually bringing this recommendation to you based on a conversation that we held the Teacher Advisory Council, which is a group that meets with me quarterly and is represented by all schools. And the conversation stemmed around personal leave versus sick leave, and the fact that some of our teachers are also parents to students who are active in our athletic programs, and now our students are sometimes moving further into competition, and they'd like to be able to go there, but recognize they shouldn't take sick leave to do so. It may not be something they could have planned for at the beginning of the year when they were using their personal leave because one might not know how their students will do or even if they'll make teams. So what this policy does is it allows for employees to convert one unified sick leave day to personal leave day in a given year. They receive three personal days each year, so this means they could essentially have a fourth. They'd be converting, many of our teachers have many, many sick days built up, so they would have the capability of doing this, but it just gives them a fourth personal day if they haven't carried any over. Please know that what we do allow them to do is to carry forward if they don't use, so that they never have, this will be confusing. They never will end up starting a school year with more than six, but they're only to use five personal days a year unless that it might be that there's a family reunion or something, or one of them may themselves be getting married where we may need to extend out beyond five personal days. But for those that are a little bit newer in the system, who might not be able to carry those personal days forward, it does give them an option, but they're pulling it from sick leave for which they get our sick leave days a year, and they can continue to bank every year, whatever they don't use. So we do have some folks literally with in some cases. So this just gives them a little bit more flexibility, and it addresses the question or the discussion that was through that teacher advisory council. So I'm bringing that recommendation forward to you. In case you are concerned, by converting a sick day, likely we're not going to create additional absences. I just think our employees are, be much happier personal day for a personal reason rather than perhaps saying they're sick and being worried that that, they've said that and they're trying to go to a child's event or something. We're anticipating it won't create additional absence. So with that, I'm recommending approval of first reading and moving to second change to policy.
And do I have a motion to move from first to second reading?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions about this one? That's a good idea, and I'm glad we're moving forward with that. Omerus, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Whitaker?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And communications or other matters for school board superintendent, Dr. Parrish, would you like to kick us off?
I would. As Ms. Woodruff indicated last night, and I attended the city council meeting last night, they both approved the budget as well as the CIP. So it was really an incredible night for us as a school system. And just as a reminder, and also for community members, by approving the CIP, they're approving our request to do major renovation to the middle school as well as roof projects for the primary school and the high school and bus purchases. As part of the budget, they did approve the tax increase that would provide the funding so that we can do all that work. So as a result of that, we'll receive $20 million to work on the middle school as well as those other projects. We'll certainly tackle the middle school first. As you may remember, in a meeting a few months ago, you did approve a prioritization of the list, so that way we'll know we're using everything that we can on the middle. After that, move through the roof projects. We did put the bus, one bus upfront because we received the EPA grant, $80,000, so we needed to buy that bus sooner rather than later to access that funding. So that was a really exciting moment for us last night at the city council meeting. And as obviously too, as part of the operating budget, it does mean that they level funded us into this year, which we made a level funding request for them, knowing what they were going to try and do for us in terms of our capital plan and what it would take. Also, as part of that budget approval, they approved the one cent tax increase that they put in that will support an SRO at our high school next year, as well as some of the other safety recommendations from the ad hoc safety committee, which we were represented by Mrs. Sheeler as well as Dr. Fox and Mr. Jaeger. So the city talked last night that they put in for two grants, one for a high school SRO and one for a middle school SRO. So depending on what happens with that grant funding will drive what the remainder of the $100,000 will go to. But without a doubt, there'll definitely be a high school SRO next year. We just need to see what funding occurs, what happens for the middle school SRO position that was recommended by that committee. So like I said, it was a great evening for us, and I just want to personally again thank city council members for the support they continue to provide us and have certainly since I've been here. Also today, in your personnel packet, which we announced at two schools, I just want to share with the community that we now have Kim Grisco approved as our new primary school principal because Mrs. Harper is retiring after a long, long career in education. And so Ms. Grisco is our current assistant principal. And I have to tell you, when I was at the school today making the announcements, there were literally screams of joy from the faculty this afternoon. So that was just so nice to hear, and she's going to do a fantastic job for us. And additionally, we have now appointed a new assistant principal at the high school, Andrew Roberts. He is coming to us from Smithfield High School with two years of experience. He lives just a couple of minutes from us, so getting closer, and he's excited to be part of a small town again because that grew up, so he'll be starting with us July 1st, and we let the high school staff know about that, and we're going to get him over to meet and greet the high school staff when we can coordinate our schedule. So those were some great, that was some great news to be able to give to our faculties today. And we'll be posting now for our new assistant principal at the primary school tomorrow. So we'll be bringing that recommendation to you eventually. I do want to recognize in the audience again, Ms. Quin Lee, she's here for representing our Langley as well as Fort E., working with our families. And we know that we are very likely to have some new families move into, especially Langley, who will probably come to us, and she'll be helping to facilitate that transition. And finally, I just want to encourage folks, we have many end-of-the-year events, which I bet Curtis will be telling us about, to come and attend, and I say to our students, you're likely not watching this, but if your parents are, stay focused. We still have school, so thank you. And thank you again for the recognition. It was certainly unnecessary, but I truly, truly appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Curtis?
The Pecosin primary students have been busy with STEM activities this past month. Pecosin Primary hosted a family STEM night Thursday, April 22nd. Families had the opportunity to participate in a family-oriented STEM activities as well as visit our local community members at the STEM fair. This event was well-attended by our families and was fun for all. The next Friday, the next Friday, April 23rd, all students participated in the interactive STEAM assembly. Students had an opportunity to construct monitor program and run various STEM-themed stations. In the classroom, the students have become scientists for the day. The theme was plant discovery with our PPS students investigating and reporting a plant just discovered to the world. The students enjoyed their STEM challenges and activities. Classrooms are wrapping up the school year with field trips. Last week, the kindergarteners visited the Norfolk Zoo, and the preschoolers visited the Blue Bird Gap Farm. Tomorrow, second graders will visit Jamestown. The Pecosin Elementary School has had a couple of exciting field trips. Fifth grade went to the zoo to learn more about animal habitats and animal classification. Fourth grade took their field trip to Richmond in support of the VA Studies SOLs. On April 26th, students had an all-day STEM day with STEM rotations and activities in all content areas and assemblies supported by the STEM grant. We ended April and began May with Cinco de Mayo. The Pecosin Middle School students have been engaged in learning opportunities across the board. Sixth grade students, sixth grade US history students have recently immersed themselves in the Civil War by completing a three-week project-based assessment. Students selected a Civil War persona, identified which side they represented, and constructed an authentic Civil War letter written to the family, friends, or business associates explaining life experiences during wartime. Seventh grade life science classes have been putting a grant from the Pecosin Education Foundation to excellent leaves. Students use technology to virtually dissect a frog through the program Frog Guts. After working with several frog modules, students could choose another animal such as a sea star or squid to dissect and do some comparative autonomy. Eighth grade English classes were tasked with creating a live interactive resource center. Each self-run student created and displayed a variety of technological components as well as reading material from three different genres: fiction, nonfiction, and poetry. Through extensive research and self-led discovery, students worked diligently evaluating valid sources and summarizing material and synthesizing their research to create a literary resource center. Our Take a Stand, Lend a Hand, Willing Prevention Program is focusing on caring with all students for the fourth quarter. PMS would like to thank our parents, the school board, and the community for the support throughout the year. This past month has been a busy one for Pecosin High School. Students are hard at work writing research papers, conducting experiments, and completing advanced placement examinations, tackling career and technical education credentialing programs, and preparing for end-of-course assessments. Over the past month, the counseling department led all ninth grade students in a lesson on resiliency and strategies for navigating difficulties in both classrooms and life. Students in the physics classes participated in an iFly indoors skydiving experience to analyze the science that makes the phenomenon possible. Students in the Sname Boat Design Contest were honored as a team with the best mathematical calculations for the second year in a row. Virginia State Troopers conducted a two-day distracted driving simulation for the students in ninth and 10th grade, illustrating the dangers of texting and other distractions. Our newest inductees were welcomed to the National Honor Society. Additionally, our spring sports team are nearing the end of their season and settling their sights on conference competitions. The arts are also thriving at PHS as we celebrated a stellar spring musical of the Addams Family as well as the Dynamite Spring Chorus Concert. We look forward to our spring band concert, which will be held on May 22nd at 6:00 PM at TAB High School. Our students continue to make their mark on the classroom, on their sports teams, in their clubs, and activities, and we would like to wish each of them success as they conclude the school year. And we thank our families, the school board, and the local community for their continued support.
Curtis.
Thank you, Curtis. Awesome. Nice job. All right, Mr. Holcomb.
Excellent. Thank you so much for this year. I'm disappointed. I have to trade a new person up next. I'll start over again. They sit at the desk down here, so thank you for your good work, though. Every year, I think Odyssey of the Mind can't impress us more, and they do. So I guess that's why I wasn't Odyssey of the Mind student myself. They're incredible. Thanks so much for your work with that group and what it brings to our community. Region Two Superintendent of the Year, impressive, Dr. Parrish. Thank you so much for all your work. This wouldn't work without you. I've only known you, of course, for three years, but I heard the horror stories of the last seven before that. So you've helped us in so many ways with shrinking budgets, and you've, every year except this year, I guess, done less with more. Sorry, more with less, sorry, and we appreciate you so much. Thank you so much. And also thank you again. Every year, I think we can't thank city council more, and we do. So thank you again this year for, city council, for all you've done for us. Again, what we do possible. Thank you so much. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mosteller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank city council as well for their continued support of our school system. I'd also like to congratulate all the individuals that were recognized tonight. Good luck to the bus drivers competing in the rodeo. Sounds like a lot of fun. And last, I would like to say, Curtis, I've really enjoyed working with you. Best of luck in the future, and whoever replaces you has big shoes to fill as well. Thank you. No further comment.
Sheeler?
I was so pleased to attend the May 1st signing day for New Horizons for the advanced technical careers graduating students. It was the first annual event of its kind in which 34 students accepted employment from a selection of eight businesses who partnered with New Horizons to develop a curriculum that meets their needs. Three of those students are from Pecosin, including Sam Snow, Chad Jinks Jr., and Jeffrey Schumate. This educational program is customer-centered, with the customer being the employer for whom the technical training is geared. This just makes so much sense. We expect the program to grow exponentially because with graduates interviewing those different businesses during the year and focusing on what those businesses want, it's almost guaranteed to be good for both at the end. Exciting to be part of that.
Best of luck to you, Curtis. Wish you the best, buddy. It's been a pleasure working with you. I also wanted to just say to Mr. Jaeger and Mrs. Harper that I hope you enjoy your retirement. Very well deserved, and to not have to probably wake up at 5:00 or 5:30 in the morning to start your day is probably a blessing in disguise as well, so thanks so much.
I do have a couple of things to say. I hadn't really planned on saying anything tonight, but I have been counting down, and this is my second-to-last meeting, and I dare say I'm not the only one who's been counting down. But, so I wanted to try to get through this because I know I've been pretty emotional over the past several months that I have been practicing in my car what I would say as I was leaving. The school board, it's been six years. It's been six sometimes challenging years. It has been six incredibly rewarding years. I want to tonight just talk about some of the staff. Our principals and vice principals, y'all are amazing. Thank you for everything that you have done. To these ladies who are in positions of authority, the principals, Dr. Fox, Ms. Woodruff, thank you so much for being such wonderful role models. You know, when, a couple of years ago, when we lost, when Dr. Colley moved on, and Mr. Bowen moved on, and Dr. Cataldo moved on, I remember we thought, the school board thought at the time, we're never going to fill these positions. And we certainly filled it in amazing ways, and you all have not let us down, so thank you so much for that. Mr. Papas, you know these buildings better than anybody. You know our operations so well. You know how we handle food service and transportation, and it's just amazing. Thank you for all that you do, and because of you, I always remember there are nine weeks in summer break. I will never forget that. All the teachers and the people who work in the offices, and the nurses, and the food service workers, y'all have just been amazing. I have, with my son, I have six more years left, and I just know I can count on everybody to support him and his classmates. It's going to be wonderful for him, and I'm excited for him. Curtis, you have been fantastic. Thank you so much. I feel privileged to finish out my school board term here with you as our student representative, so thank you so much. Next meeting, if I can get through it, I'm going to talk about my school board members, hopefully in a good way, and Dr. Parrish definitely in a good way, if I can get through it, because I'm getting a little emotional now. That is all I'm going to get through today before I start blubbering, so thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, ma'am. I'll pinch you or poke you or something if you start to get emotional next month. I'd like to thank Ms. Sheeler, Dr. Fox, and Mr. Jaeger for serving on the school safety committee. Fine work. I was amazed at the council meeting with the report out at how much was accomplished in such a short amount of time. So hats off to the whole committee there. And to Curtis, Curtis mentioned something about Pecosin getting best math calculations two years in a row for the Sname Boat Design Competition. That is no small society for naval architects and marine engineers, and the problems that they have to go through are just very, very technical and require an awful lot of expertise. So nice job with the Sname Boat Design Competition there. Thank you very much for, city council, for approving the budget, the CIP, and allowing us the opportunity to improve our school, the safety of the schools. And like I said, council meeting, I, and I can, I'm sure I can speak for the rest of the bill, be diligent in spending that money very wisely, prudently, and we will be good stewards of the money that you have entrusted us with, so I really, really appreciate that. In the signing event, I believe there's, you know, online, I would encourage people to go and see that. It was the first ever, it was a phenomenal video, and it's pretty eye-opening, I thought. And I think it's a, people are starting to catch on and to see that, wow, I can actually go make money and learn to do a job, and they're going to pay me while they're training me. The great concept, and I hope it's up an awful lot of steam in the years ahead. And with that being said, do we have any material for board review?
We do not this evening.
And we will adjourn for closed meeting.